Okay, welcome to the Easton School Committee Meeting of April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. This is a Zoom meeting. And you're welcome to come in and watch us, listen to us, whatever. Okay, on the agenda, the COVID nineteen update, Dr. Cabral. Do we have to introduce ourselves again this time like we did last time?
I think so.
Okay, so can I just, I'm sorry, just some technical issue here. I cannot record this right now. I don't know if Jason is able to record this. Uh, Ecat, if you could just put in the chat if you're able to record this right now.
He's in the room.
He's here.
I know he's here.
He is here.
He's muted, though.
Yeah.
I know, but he can type in the chat to me. Okay, he said they're recording. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
So, um, we'll introduce first, so Dr. Cabral. You can introduce.
You're gonna introduce yourselves?
Yeah.
Oh, uh, Dr. Cabral, superintendent of school.
Then Caroline.
Caroline O'Neill, school committee member.
Michelle Durant, school committee member.
Nancy DeLuca, school committee chair.
Jackie Wiseman, school committee member.
Jen Starr, school committee member.
Chrissy Pruitt, assistant superintendent.
Okay, and the first item is COVID nineteen update, Dr. Cabral.
Okay, thank you. So I don't know if residents have been following the cases in Easton. There have been some double-digit climbs each day. Uh, as of yesterday, there were one hundred and seventy-three cases. What I am coming to understand, though, and I have a call with the Board of Health every day, and I am coming to understand that there are some cases that are being that are being diagnosed by doctors based on symptoms and exposure and not necessarily a test, because tests are still difficult to come by. So I am trying to see if there are more cases perhaps than what we are able to report through positive cases through the Maven System and Board of Health. So we're trying to figure that out. We, of course, as you can imagine statistically, unfortunately have several staff members that are positive and are recovering. Um, we wish them well and are doing everything we can to support them and their families. In terms of the buildings, obviously those are now closed for the remainder of the year per Governor Baker's order. But school is not over, and we want to make sure that people understand that. We have many, many questions that are yet unanswered. The difficulty here is not so much the cancellation itself, because I think many of us probably knew that that was coming at some point. It is more so the the unknown of when we might be able to get back in order. So will we be able to have summer school, for example? Will we be able to have extended school year for our special education programs? Will we be able to start school in the fall? And if we do, will we be able to begin quote-unquote normally in the fall? Uh, in terms of senior events such as graduation and prom, when can those things be rescheduled? So if people are tuning in this evening for answers to those questions and for have a lot of those, we can tell you what we're working on. But we have a running multi-page list from the leadership team of every question we can think of. We are furiously working at trying to find solutions to them. Again, we're trying to plan things for a completely uncertain future. And as you can imagine, not just from a calendar perspective, but from a budget perspective, it is, it's extremely difficult and trying. And instead of coming up with one or three or four scenarios, we're coming up with ten or eleven or twelve different possible scenarios. And it's extremely time-consuming and unnerving for people to have to pivot and shift at a moment's notice, which is really how we're living right now day to day. So we do ask for a little bit of patience in that and understand that some things are not as uh, simple as others. It's quite complicated, but that every question people have is likely a question we have and are working hard to address. In terms of, for example, even graduation, I am in contact with all of the superintendents in the state. And we have separate subgroups in the region. So I'm very familiar with what every superintendent in the region is thinking and doing and where they're at. We do get a lot of emails from people with the intention of being helpful, I'm quite sure, letting us know what other people are doing. But I I am very well aware what the superintendents are doing. We talk regularly. We met again this morning a couple times. And then we're in texts and chains together, email chains. So we're really aware of what everyone's doing and we're doing our best to schedule things. I would encourage people to resist the temptation, which is a normal human endeavor, I believe, to make comparisons from district to district. Because, again, in these conversations, I'm privy to a lot of information that most people would not be about why a particular superintendent might be doing something that we can't do or vice versa. Conditions are different, budgets are different, personnel's different. Circumstances are different. So, um, so it's very difficult to do any kind of a comparison. Even though we are working on some of these things, we may have to change them. So, for example, for graduation, we are talking about potentially doing something in the in the late summer. Of course, we have to think about many variables, though. For example, students leaving for college orientations, which are all being pushed back until late summer. Students starting sports uh, in colleges, students leaving for the military. So there are a lot of confounding variables, and we're trying to collect information from people about when their events might be scheduled. So, again, it may sound like we'll just do it at this time, but things are very complicated. And, again, it may change. We are finding that different information's coming in all the time. We are certainly not, we're nowhere near past our peak in Massachusetts. Hopefully, we're at it. If not, hopefully, we're very close to being at it. But we're not on the downside yet, so it's really difficult to predict. So we may try to arrange something for August with a virtual backup system, if you will, where we can use the virtual system in the event that we are not able to safely have people gather together. So just, I use that as an example, not because it's anything definite by any means, but an example of how one thing that seems like perhaps it can be easy to switch a date of something can get complex very quickly. So that's an example of the kinds of things we're looking at. We're also looking at legal implications about having events for people who may not be students anymore. We're even having these really, really granular conversations about when does a student not legally fall under liability anymore? Is it the last day of school, or is it the day that they graduate? Or is it the, it's just, it's very complicated very quickly, as you can see. So we're asking for your patience as we weed through some of those things. If there are questions, uh, we are also putting that out to our staff. I shared it with the union. If they can let us know about questions they have, we're adding it to the list. And as I've done before, I'm going to come up with a frequently asked questions list that we'll post online and send to everyone. And, again, as always, if anything is missing from that list, let us know, and we'll certainly work on that. So we have many things that we're considering. I'm gonna ask Chrissy Pruitt in just a minute, the assistant superintendent, to fill us in on the implications for remote learning going forward, because obviously that's a big question for people, too. I will start by saying that we did have a call with the commissioner, and he assured us that we were getting guidance on four major areas. By the end of this week, we haven't gotten anything yet, but certainly it will take a little bit of time to even go through it once we do get it. We are all anticipating some increased mental health needs, even from our children who don't typically display depression and anxiety. We are finding that there's a huge uptick in that, and we're scrambling to support that. So he is, the department's going to be offering some increased mental health supports. They're also going to be sharing best practices from across Massachusetts so that teachers can make use of things that other departments have developed. They're going to come up with the power standards. And what that means is, in our Massachusetts curriculum framework standards, there are standards that are being identified as those that are more, the most powerful in terms of leverage or success at the next grade level. And those will be determined by the department. We are not to determine those on our own. Those will be shared so that they're the same across the state. As you can imagine, these are coming from our standards that we've been using all year. As you can imagine, this time of year typically would be MCAS. It would be end-of-year events. It would be a lot of field trips, uh, field days. And so a lot of the curriculum is very heavily loaded before March. So what we'll, what we'll have to do is the curriculum leadership team and the administrators are going to go through the curriculum frameworks and the power standards of every single grade, course, level, content area in the entire district, and determine what has been covered to satisfaction in each individual course, what may need to be revisited, because perhaps they finding that students did not have a lot of success with it, or they're seeing in remote learning that some of those skills are lacking, and which standards that are identified as power standards may not have been covered yet. And so those would be new instruction. And the learning going forward is going to be based on that. But like I said, I'll let Chrissy talk more in depth about what they're working on right now. And then the fourth piece of information that will come to us are protocols for repopulation of buildings. So it's very unlikely that there will be a point in time where things will just be back to normal from one day to the next, that there will be some sort of reintegration, whether that, and lots of things have been bandied about, whether that is students and staff wearing masks and/or gloves, whether it's staggered openings of schools, whether we continue with remote learning in the fall. It's, again, very difficult to predict since we don't know by the end of August, beginning of September, what the health and welfare status is going to be in Massachusetts and certainly not in Easton. So, again, it's very difficult to predict that right now, and so we're making many different scenarios. He will be providing us with some of that, which, of course, will be helpful. And just from a perspective of Easton public schools, again, where you talk about things that may perhaps our situation unique from others. We donated, we literally cleaned out every kitchen in every school. We're using that for our Grab and Go program, which I'll update you on in a moment. We completely, some departments, some EMS, emergency response departments were more prepared or had access to more resources than others. We completely gutted our nurses' offices and provided all of equipment that would be considered necessary for opening schools, all of our thermometers, all of our masks and gloves, surgical masks, N ninety-five masks, goggles. We've given all of our cleaning supplies, disinfectants, bleaches, electrostatic cleaners. Obviously, we're working together as a department, as a town, to make sure that our ambulances are sufficiently disinfected, that our first responders are properly protected with PPE, um, and they have all the appropriate equipment. So, and even this time of year would be the time of year that we order our supplies for next year. Paper, um, paper towels, disinfectants, cleaning products, folders, those kinds of paper clips, those kinds of things. And that's just not being done right now because the budget is in such a state of flux. So everybody's in a different place about how, when, why, where, who, and how, you know, if we can open, when we can open. And that is in the midst of the uncertainty of how things are going to be in town. So there are many, 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 many things to consider. But at the forefront is always going to be the safety of our students and our staff. And so decisions will be made with that at the forefront. And so I understand some things may be confusing, or we may be doing things differently. But we assure you, it is because of our unique circumstances and that we absolutely will do nothing that we think will in any way compromise the safety of our children or our adults. As far as the Grab and Go program, we are feeding over about seventy families every session. We provide food. We provide breakfast and lunch for all children that are in a family experiencing some food vulnerabilities. We have that going Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays throughout the week. And every Monday, we are also holding a donation drive for the food pantry in Easton, which is in great need of some food supplies as well. So that has been extremely, extremely positive and successful, and we thank everybody who's been participating. At the back of Richardson Olmsted is the Grab and Go for people that feel they are in need. You can go back there or contact Anne Weintraub, the principal of Center School, who's helping to organize that effort and doing a phenomenal job. And in the front of the schools, just on Mondays, we are having people do a contactless drive where they either publicly open their trunk and volunteers will take out the food and then deliver it to the food pantry. Or they just leave it on the sidewalk and we deliver it to the food pantry. So that has been very successful. We believe at this point that all students have been given Chromebooks that need them, as well as access, internet access. There may be a few stragglers, but we have had not just one adult, but many adults reaching out to children. So we have assigned every single adult in the buildings, whether they are teachers, support staff, administrators, paraprofessionals. Every single person is to reach out to the students that they work with. So we'll reach out to medically fragile children, but so will their classroom teacher. And so will any service provider. A student third grade or fifth grade will have any teachers they work with reaching out to them, including specials. So we should have every child being contacted multiple perspectives or to reach out to students to check on their well-being, which is a primary concern, frankly, during this uncertain time. And then also, of course, the teachers that work with them, whether it's the specials, whether it's the classroom teacher, they're reaching out to students as well. So we have only a few students. We actually went through every single student in the district, over thirty-six hundred students, and have a spreadsheet of all the students that teachers have not been able to contact. That is clearly a concern for us. We have them using multiple modalities, whether that is sending them information via email, calling them. We've had people drive by their homes. And so any of those names that we're having difficulty reaching, we do understand that some people may be staying with relatives elsewhere, and that's perfectly fine. But as you can imagine, it is our primary concern to make sure that we make contact with every single child. So all, uh, any names that we collect, which out of thirty-six hundred, there really weren't that many. But we refer them all to our school resource officer at the Easton Police Department, and he has been performing wellness checks for us at people's houses, just to make sure that we have that contact with kids. And I think that's it in terms of everything other than, sorry, my computer, uh, in terms of everything other than the remote learning. Um, and so I'll let Mrs. Pruitt update you on that, and then I can take any questions from COVID nineteen update perspective. I am going to talk about budgeting a little bit later, so if it has to do with budget, maybe we can do it then. But other than that, I can take questions then. Chrissy, if you'd like to jump in, please?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. As far as the, an update on our remote learning, we have been working tirelessly to ensure that our students are provided with educational opportunities, really so that we are not regressing. Our biggest, our, the main focus as of now, or as of the beginning of this week, was to ensure that our students were not regressing in what they had already learned. Now that we know that the, that the, um, schools will be closed for the remainder of the year, as Dr. Cabral had mentioned before, we will be shifting towards those, looking at those power standards, as she had mentioned previously. The staff, I have been jumping on the poor staff. I had an actual colleague of mine remind me that, you know, not all teachers want the assistant superintendent sitting in on their meetings, because I keep jumping in saying, hi, everyone! So, so I've been trying to limit it a little bit, but I get really excited when I see them. But they have, they, the conversations that they're having as they're planning, the intentionality, the thoughtfulness in what they are doing to provide the best opportunities for our students in this situation has really been remarkable. I know that our PK through five teachers, they're working with their unit planning teams. So a teacher may specifically be on a math team, for example, and they're working with that team to really dive deep into what, um, what activities will be planned for the week in the content area. And then the teachers are then going back and looking at the whole plan with every content and ensuring that it is accessible for all the students in their class. They, the, um, they also are providing feedback to students. They are, you know, this is all, all teachers. They are participating in professional development as well. We have a professional development site that, um, that all staff have access to, um, that they, we keep updating it and adding more webinars to those, um, those sites. And, uh, and then, starting next week, we're starting some live PD within our own district as well. And then they're also connecting with students. The more, the more team meetings I attend, I have been hearing the constraints that they have, you know, thinking about a first-grade classroom with twenty, twenty-three kids in a chat and how difficult that may be. As far as, you know, the, you know, the teacher can use so many classroom management skills, but it's very, you know, the distractions are different when they're at home. Um, and how they're actually, they've been, some teachers have been using this as an opportunity to meet with smaller groups. So they might not, they might be meeting with the group, but then meeting with smaller groups, our special education teachers, um, are meeting with the students that they service and keeping track of that as well. It's just been, it's been remarkable. You know, we, our teachers are working tirelessly. So many of them are actually putting their students in front of their own needs, um, which I keep reminding them that they really need to be taking care of themselves as well. Um, and they, they, it's been, it's been a remarkable thing to see. You know, we are very, very blessed here in Easton. Our teachers are so dedicated to our kids. Um, and it's, it's, they're, it's remarkable. In grade six through twelve, we are grading the work. We are, as far as participation. So students are receiving, um, participation grades. Mr. Carroll and Mr. Paul had sent out notification to families, actually addressing what that might entail. Now that we know that school is out for the remainder of the year, um, and we're waiting for the guidance document from DSE, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, we are meeting with the curriculum leaders and administrators next, early next week, hoping that we have the guidance document by then to reconsider accountability for the work that's being completed as far as percentages, um, and also looking at our PK to five and how do we really ensure engagement? Because what, what, some things that we are finding, too, is that, you know, the momentum was great, but we are finding, you know, we want to make sure and ensure that all students remain engaged. And so, you know, having some more accountability may be a good way to ensure that that engagement continues. I also just wanted to highlight one last thing, that the commissioner, the Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley, was really proud, and we are, too, that we ranked, Massachusetts ranked number two in the country as far as remote learning plans. I'm not sure if that was mentioned at our last school committee meeting. It's all kind of blending together these days. But MIT Teaching Systems Lab ran a study, um, and Massachusetts ranked number two. We lost one point on something that the commissioner ensures that we have done, and we have. It's regarding communication of technology and the, the, um, platforms being used, which we have done. Um, so he actually thinks that we should be number one, um, or tied for number one. But, but, you know, when we look at the remote learning plans that are out there, and I've seen some of my colleagues actually sharing plans from their children. I see what my children are, you know, doing. I see, we really are, Easton, their remote learning plans are really in the top tier of Massachusetts learning plans, and I'm very proud of that and very proud of the teachers for the work that they've been doing. So that is, that's what I have right now for you as far as remote learning. If you have any questions, we are about to kind of shift a little bit and pivot a little bit as this new guidance is coming out. So more information to come soon. Um, and we'll make sure that that communication gets out to families as soon as possible.
Right, and it's, of course, you can imagine the amount of work it's going to take to review the entire curriculum and the power standards and making plans for the power standards going forward. The teachers certainly know how to teach them, but to teach new standards, when normally you would do it in small groups with physical manipulatives and physical prompts and being able to redirect students, especially the smallest students, it's going to be very challenging. So not only do they have to come up with these lessons going forward, but they have to do it in a way that it can be effectively communicated and assessed of our learners. And with that in mind, being accessible to all learners equally, and that is very important to us. So it's going to take a lot of thought and effort. So certainly this week we'll continue with the current plans, next week with the current plans, and then we'll see, depending on the guidance, we'll see just how in-depth it is, how many power standards we're talking about and so forth. So everybody's working diligently on this. We're all ready and waiting for the information. Hopefully, we will get it by the end of the week, as we have been assured. It's certainly not work we can embark upon until we get it because we don't know what it will be, and certainly we don't want to prepare information that's incorrect.
Does anyone have any? We met with the, I just wanted to add that we met with the curriculum leaders today to kind of prep them for what's coming, and they were already very prepped for it. So, um, you know, they're, they're aware and they're ready and waiting. Um, and so that's why we're going to meet again early next week.
I had to really caution everybody to just hold off for a minute and let's see what we're getting, because I'm telling you, they are amazing. They've always been like this, and I've told you that repeatedly over the years. However, this is certainly a time where they are personally challenged, as well as professionally challenged. And once again, they're rising to the occasion. So I think everybody has a good reason to be proud in Easton of the professionals that are, that are looking out for their kids, really, truly. Can we answer questions for you?
Caroline, do you have any questions?
I had to unmute myself. Not right now, thank you.
Michelle?
I do not.
I have none. Jackie?
No, I'm anxious, too, to see what guidance comes out at the end of the week and how we're going to go forward with that.
Jen?
I echo that. No, no questions right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cabral and Chrissy. Uh, next up on the agenda is the budget discussion. Dr. Cabral?
Okay, so this is directly related, of course, to the state and the federal government. So it's going to be difficult not to get into too much of what you may already know just by being aware of what's happening in the world, literally, and on the news. I think the best thing I can do, really and truly, is advise everyone to see Connery, the town administrator's budget presentation to the select board that was made on Tuesday, to let you know just how mercurial everything is. There are honestly, there are statistics in his presentation where the numbers have already changed because it's just, it's a moving target, as we all know, but it even changes this quickly. He, I think, very concisely and, and in a very layman's terms, was able to communicate what's happening at the federal level in terms of stimulus packages and revenues, expenses, brought it down to the state level and for Easton. So I won't get into too much of that because he had the great, he had the great visuals for that, and I didn't want to try to duplicate his efforts. So I would strongly encourage people to check the Ecat website for that presentation. He, uh, some of the things that I can say relate specifically to the school department. So just to, to, to really oversimplify it. so just to, to, to really oversimplify it, uh, not doing it justice, but P, I have gotten many questions about, well, and I mentioned some of this at our last school committee meeting, but I think it bears repeating. It's been very confusing for some people to understand why we're not saving tons of money right now with the schools closed, and how we could possibly be having some financial difficulties even this year before we even get to FY twenty-one. And just as a reminder, the, the school budget is extremely complex. All, all large budgets, of course, are complex, but school budgets are, are a rare breed. And um, you know, I work very well with the town administrator and we share a lot of ideas, and a, a lot of times he just scratches his head and says, I can't even believe it works like that, but it, it, it does. And we're both becoming very educated, he's becoming very educated about school finance, I'm becoming very educated about municipal finance, and they're very different, but we need to know both, I think, to be complementary. And so, some of the items from a school district perspective is, are, that we have, even if I just talk about staff, for example, so eighty percent of our budget is staff, and twenty percent are things, materials, whether that's classroom materials, paper, furniture, what have you, or cleaning materials, supplies, things for the buildings, schools, repairs even. And so eighty percent of the budget is rather fixed. Uh, we have contractual obligations every year, and so we typically have only about twenty of the, percent of the budget to work with. Well, with that said, of all, we have about six hundred employees total, and of that, over a hundred are employees who are not either at, not at all or not one hundred percent in our operating budget. In other words, we use some revenue streams in order to pay for those positions. For example, some are paid through state or federal grants. Some are paid through revenue collections like um activity fees, sports fees, kindergarten tuition, pre-K tuition, food that's purchased, uh, goes to food service. Um, so there are positions now, our first priority, as we discussed, was to keep all adults working so that we could make sure that all of our children were supported. We wanted to make sure all hands were on deck and multiple people were reaching out to kids, that our buildings were getting properly cleaned and checked, that our food service was able to provide the grab and go lunches. Now, it's not our whole food, food service, because as you remember, we have a grandfathering contract where we have some employees of the Eastern Public Schools and the rest are Woodson's employees. So, again, it may seem like we have a lot of food service employees for, for serving relatively small amount of people when you consider the whole population of the district, but we really only have our Woodson's employees that are available to us. And so, i- it's important to keep people like that working. So to use that one example, we typically take in uh collection, food purchase money to pay for that, that is not, they're not in our operating budget. So right now, we're paying for them out of our operating budget, and like I said, eighty percent is spoken for already. Kindergarten teachers come from kindergarten tuition, we're not, we're not getting payments for kindergarten tuition right now. And we are doing, we, we're, we're working on some partial reimbursements for, for kindergarten tuition, which equals a lot of money. And now we have to find money to pay those teachers, because they are offering online learning, and they're checking in with students, and we need people to check in with our kindergarteners as well as our pre-K students. So those are just a, a few of the examples, we're missing out on all the facilities rentals, money that we get typically this time of year that helps us make all the repairs that need to be done on buildings. This is a very busy time of year with recitals and end of years, uh, end of um program celebrations and things, so we're missing out on a lot of revenue that is, is hurting us deeply. Not because um simply the fact of not collecting it, but because we are paying out for critical and essential personnel that's not in the budget. So we're using things like our materials, supplies, money, and our repair money, and we have nothing coming in to um, to, to fill that void. So we are uh working very hard to make sure we make it through the rest of the school year, paying as many people as we can. We are already looking at perhaps identifying some staff that may, we may need to look at in the month of May of um not continuing if we can't, certainly if we can't find things for them to continue doing or working. And uh, the town and the state are strapped. At our last meeting, I think I mentioned that people are not buying lottery tickets right now or playing the lottery. That may seem inconsequential and, and not related at all to a school system, but chapter seventy funds, what is specifically used to fund school systems, comes directly from the lottery. And so millions and millions and millions of dollars are being lost right now that are not going to be available for FY twenty-one. We also have in the town, very, very important revenue streams that are not, that are, are halted now as the town is, is in effect shut down. Meals taxes, uh, obviously have taken a hit. People are not out buying cars, and so they're not benefiting from excise taxes. Uh, these are all things that, again, we all hate paying our taxes and, and find it frustrating perhaps, but it literally keeps everything else moving. And so, we are looking at some significant shortfalls for next year. So uh, again, I won't get too much into Connor's presentation, but also something I mentioned at our last meeting was a maybe a, again, a simplified version of looking at it is the recovery and what that might look like. So some economists are, are using the analogy, uh, using the visual of capital letters, like a V comeback, or a W, or a U. And you can imagine by looking at those letters, um, what that means in terms of an economic rebound. This is being compared to, and in many matrices, being compared um at a worse level than the um two thousand eight um market uh crash that we had, that we um only in two thousand sixteen were able to get back to those levels. So the very big difference there is that, right before that, we did have an override, an, an operational override in Easton, and it was intended to advance education and departments in the town. It was not able to do that, but it served a very, very important purpose, because when other towns were in a very significant and dire needs, Easton was able to make their way through. It was difficult, but because of that infusion of funds, um, and, and since, basically had been using money from stabilization fund until only recently to make ends meet, literally. Now that is gone, um, I will not tell you about things you're already aware of in terms of the town and the, and the wise fiscal management that has been going on and increasing the stabilization fund. But the budget subcommittee right before the um pandemic broke out and essentially things were shut down, did investigate all possibilities for advancing the departments in Easton to what we believe the um citizens are looking for in terms of services. And an operational override was certainly a viable um option, possibility. Um, that seems, of course, um, way um like five years ago now, even though it was only about six weeks ago. But uh, the fact of the matter is, without that, um, the the possibility of facing what this town faced in two thousand eight without it is um concerning, to say the least. And so, in terms of looking ahead, if you remember the presentation that I made to you, and anybody who's looking for that presentation, it is also available on ECAT, the school committee meeting in March. And it did recognize a remaining approximately one million dollar shortfall in the town, that the town had to still close that gap. And we had been working on that, and I, I feel as though actually we were quite close. It was, it, it was felt very deeply in the department. We were going out, going to be going without some very essential services, uh, we were going to be going backwards for sure. And the most recent figures that I've um received from Mr. Reed and Ms. Nightingale from the town is that there is an anticipated um town shortfall now of two point eight million dollars. And so, instead of having to, in essence, find a way to save a million dollars, and we literally cut to the bone in the school department, and were um really set up to continue to face some um, some state sanctions, if you will, and um findings from the Department of Ed and the Office of Civil Rights for some of the things that we weren't able to provide. Now that figure has uh in essence tripled. And so, again, when I'm talking about the most difficult part of this, being able to predict the very uncertain future, and believe me, in the best of years, we're planning a budget months before it's even finalized by the state. So it's always a moving target, and we're used to bobbing and weaving and really making projections and multiple different plans. This is like nothing ever before. I, I'm not, I don't even know how to, how to encapsulate this or quantify it for you. It is um, it is frightening to think about what this could mean. Uh, I have said that if we are looking at the worst case scenario, I'm not entirely sure how we can responsibly open our doors, and we don't have that option. We are required by law to provide a free and appropriate, excuse me, a free and appropriate education for all students, so needless to say, I'm quite concerned that if we don't um face a quick rebound, which would be the V uh, economic rebound, which is what the current figures are based on, that happening. So if we have a U or a W, that is, it's just gonna be even worse. Uh, I'm not really sure what, how we're going to weather that. As it is, I am quite concerned that there will be several layoffs next year, certainly more than there were last year. Con hard at coming up the actuals for, for April, but obviously the month isn't over yet. To, to, can be expected in, in revenue, makes some kind of projections going for. The only month they have incorporated in this pandemic is March, what happens, and half of it was, and some of it was in park business, so it's really a flawed uh metric for them to use. So they're going to try to use April and May, if possible, to make some projections. You know very well that by now, every year, we have a budget for the schools. We have something that you have voted on and that we will have, would have already presented and would be preparing next week or thereabouts to present at town meeting. We don't, we're starting from scratch, right now, right this minute, we're starting from scratch. So I'm not entirely sure when that will be ready. Certainly, we are literally, maybe, if not twenty-four seven, I, I, I'll say we're nineteen-seven, twenty-seven, working on it. And as soon as we get information, we extrapolate that, make some models, and sometimes have to scrap everything we're working on and start over again. Obviously, we'll continue to do that, and we'll bring you information as soon as we have it. As of right now, the most current figure I have is that two point eight million. We are waiting and hoping, we're of course still working with our legislators, as we have been aggressively doing for years. We are convinced at this point, there is no way for uh cities or towns to bail themselves out. We are, we, we need federal support. So you may have heard about a fourth stimulus, um, possibly coming from the federal government. That is, i- it goes without saying, that is absolutely essential, absolutely essential. The, the CARES Act that we were able to receive federal money from is very, very specific and very um pointed and strict in what it can be spent for. So for example, if we have custodians working overtime to clean buildings, we can count that overtime cost, but we can't make up for any lost revenue. We can't pay the kindergarten teachers, because we're not getting tuitions, we can't. So eh, there are many things that are, are hurting us right now very much, but it doesn't qualify for that money, because while it is a result of COVID nineteen, it is not directly related to addressing it, serving it. Um, you know, we're hoping, of course, that our protective equipment, our thermometers, those kinds of things that we donated will ultimately be able to get them back. But in terms of, you know, when I brought it up before, in terms of opening a building, when will that happen? When will we, when would we even get that money, when would we get those materials? And while we're hoping they're covered, we're, of course, at any moment, we can be told that something isn't covered. But there are many things that we're aware of are, are just not covered. Um, eh, the revenue loss being the deepest and most hurtful at this time. Um, and, and it's absolutely not covered. So it's, it's great that that money's there, and we're, we're blessed and thankful. But in terms of making things, um, making things all right, if you will, for the school department, it's just, it's just not gonna do that. So we're hoping that any further stimulus packages, we are able to use a little bit more broadly, hopefully, because certainly all these things are COVID-related. Certainly wouldn't have had these issues without that. Let's see. In terms of our grants, one of the first things that I, I know we communicated, Chrissy and I were working on that very first week we were out of school, scrambling to try to make sure that the federal grants could be used for staff that would be teaching remotely, which we just didn't know, that was a brand new thing. Right now, that is the case, we have been um not assured, we have been strongly advised that it is not likely that those will be cut by the end of this year. However, it is likely they will be cut next year. So we may be able to get through the year with that, but we are very concerned about next year. As we had already told you, we were notified that chapter one, uh, title one money was being cut significantly, um, that we're gonna lose hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're being told that a lot of the stimulus money that's being doled out will be done using the formulae for title one. So any money that we might be getting in the next year uh could be significantly impacted because of that. We also are not aware yet, this was even a conversation on today's superintendent call, if the Student Opportunity Act money will be available. Obviously, that has not helped us, but I'm well aware, many districts are in great need of that money. I am extremely concerned for Easton, which is my responsibility. If that huge influx of money is, you know, there was about eighty percent of that money was targeted toward thirty-five percent of the districts in the state. We were not benefiting from that, in fact, our money available to us was going to be la- less next year than it is in FY twenty, which is why we already had those fiscal concerns. But it is concerning to think that if there are millions and millions and millions of dollars uh going to those districts, who I'm sure are very much in need of it, it's just money that's not available for us. So that, that's a concern for us. We are also looking at our contracts. We have been getting conflicting information or competing information, if you will, about certain contracts. Um, our out of district special education placements, our day placements, our transportation costs and so forth. The commissioner uh did at one point say we should try to to keep all of these functioning. Obviously, he has a vested interest, as do we all, of having these services available to us whenever school is back in session. And so we have been trying to do that and we will as long as we can. Transportation right now, you may have heard, is um one of the sticky wickets. And that is because there is a procurement law that prohibits us from lawfully paying for services not rendered. And so we have been asking D O R for a position on that, if they could release us of that so that we can work on um making some contractual amendments. And we have not been able to get that yet. So the commissioner did advise us to pay quote unquote, to the extent possible. And right now, we're getting legal guidance that it is not possible, so we're still working on that. It's not, it's not over, of course. Again, in terms of comparisons with other districts, there, uh I am aware, of course, that some districts have settled. There are districts in Western Mass that have very different uh landscapes than we do, their their contracts are very, very different than ours because they're far more spread out. They have different vehicle needs and so forth. There is also differences between uh companies that have laid off employees who are collecting unemployment and and companies that that haven't laid off and and are still paying them. So again, every district and every contract is different. So I would expect it it would make sense that every contract, uh every contract negotiation is going to be different. And so again, while some districts have made some decisions already, certainly we've contacted their superintendents, we talked to their business managers. We're aware of what worked, what didn't work, why it wouldn't work for Easton. Um, regionally, we're in touch with our uh vendors. Some are more willing to negotiate than others, there has to be a negotiation, obviously. And so we're working on all of that and we will, of course, keep you posted. Uh, that is transportation. And as you know, finally, I think finally, town meeting has been postponed by the Select Board to June twenty second. That is obviously very close to the end of the fiscal year. It's wise to to make it as late as possible, of course. That has some implications for us as a school district, again, that we we need to notify, it's in our contracts um that we need to notify staff. It's very common, it's in every contract in the Commonwealth, that we, there is a certain date by which you need to notify employees of potential layoffs. And for us, it's June fifteenth. So we have a very short amount of time to really figure out what's happening with little to no information. So we're going to do our best to provide some as realistic scenarios as possible. But there are going to be some decisions that need to be made by June fifteenth that will have huge implications for next year. So we might get more information in July or August or September or even October. And that might be fine for other uh entities, but for a school department, that is very difficult because our staff leaves in June and they have to be notified before they leave. Otherwise, we pay them extended unemployment ba- benefits um for thirty nine weeks. And that does not save us any money because we are self-employed, uh self-insured, excuse me, for unemployment. And so we we pay that. In addition, we certainly don't want to lose qualified staff, they will, of course, apply elsewhere. I've been on the receiving end of those pink slips and I understand what it feels like. And no matter how much you're assured that you're wanted back and you'll try to come back and it it they have a livelihood to think of and it has very dire effects on it, on the district. So again, we have, we have a lot to do in a very short amount of time. And so I assure you, we will be working on that feverishly. It is possible, we will have no budget uh by July first, that is possible, of course. If it is legislatively, we can have what I've described to you before as a one twelfth budget. That is where we have fiscal twenty um totals. You have them distributed by the month. We may be okay, again, different than other entities in July and perhaps in August because the contractual increases for the largest number of our staff doesn't begin until September. But it is not an ideal situation and there are many other contracts that start and many things that need to be prepaid. So there are things we prepay in order to save money. There are things that we prepay um for uh for special education, for example. And so it it's gonna get very complicated very quickly if we don't have a new fiscal year in July first. But again, that's something that we will need to deal with on July first. And we're just, we're basically working day to day here. And um doing that pivoting, bobbing, weaving thing. And um just lucky as all heck that we have the staff that we do that is able to take care of our children while we're trying to take care of all these other things for their safety, security and um the fiscal responsibility that we have for the town. So I'm very thankful to our administrators, I'm very thankful to our central office administration and staff, our school administrators, our parents for feedback and help that they've been giving us, our many, many volunteers, our food service workers, our custodians, literally every every employee we have is pitching in. And um I think it speaks to the culture we have in our district and I'm very, very proud of that. And I I just feel as though the entire budget forecast is so bleak, I need to end on a positive note. And that is the positive note is that we are extremely blessed with with the team that we have. And I'm um I'm humbled to work alongside them and serve them as well as I am to to serve um all of you in the residence of of Easton. Can we answer any questions for you about the budget? Marilyn is here as well.
Okay, thank you. So before the um we ask questions, I just wanna tell anybody that's on this uh uh Zoom meeting with us. You can type your questions into the chat area and we'll get to your questions. Um, Chrissy Pruitt's in charge and she'll look at the questions and and relay them to us as necessary. All right, Caroline, you're up.
Well, I I did warn a few friends that the pessimist in me is pretty um active right now. Since we have to notify by June fifteenth, do we really have any choice other than to, I guess you'd say, play it safe from a budgetary standpoint? If we don't at least realistically assess what the likely reduction might have to be, wouldn't we be in so much more trouble by the time we got into next year? From a, you know, funding standpoint?
Are you saying um to give notice to many people as opposed to not enough people? Is that, is that what I think?
Well, I'm saying, you know, do a really clear, the last thing in the world I would wanna see is layoffs. It would break my heart. And we've had a few threats in the past, I know we've had occasional layoffs here and there over the last couple of decades, but it's never been, you know, a huge number or, you know, anything close to this situation that we're facing now. But I'm just, you know, if we sort of underestimate the likely consequence of what we're facing now, won't we be in much worse shape mid-year? I mean, could we even meet our obligations at that point?
If we miscalculate, no, we would not be able to meet our obligations. Um, we would have to do other layoffs. And um, you know, just even from beyond fiscal responsibility, there's obviously a moral and ethical responsibility. You don't want to be laying off educational professionals mid-school year. That is tragic for them and for their families. That is not the time of year for an educator to find a job, certainly not in this fiscal climate. So there are many reasons, fiscal, moral, ethical, professional, that we want to get as close as we can um to the target, which is why we don't have a plan for you right now because we wanna have literally, i- if we're presenting June twenty second, I likely am finalizing that June twenty second because I'm gonna be using up to June twenty second information, literally, that we might have from the federal government, the state government and also from our own town government. So that, uh, yes, absolutely, we have to hit as tight as we can. Um, what we don't wanna do is what some districts, sometimes what they'll do is they'll, they'll pink slip literally every non-professional status person in the district. They'll pink slip everyone. Uh, you know, we, we don't wanna do that. We wanna make sure we have staff when we begin school again and you really run a risk of not being able to do that. We have cer- certain areas, we're we're asking our principals to review their areas, talk to their staff, see if they can make um economies wherever they can. But unfortunately, these are not um savings that can be done through our twenty percent supply line. Um, these are things that are going to have to be from the salary line because they have to be um sustain- sustainable. We can't have one-time savings on something. We do, we are not anticipating that this is going to be a problem that we're not gonna face in FY twenty two as well. So we are working very hard on this right now and certainly we'll give you more information when we have it. But yeah, you're right, we're threading a needle, big time. A big fat forty three million dollar needle. Uh, and it's um, like I said, unlike nothing any of us has ever seen before. So fortunately, we have a lot of knowledgeable people working on this, no one who's knowledgeable in this kind of scenario, for sure. But hopefully, we have enough experience that can get us through as closely as possible.
Okay, I probably wasn't direct enough. I guess what I want to know is, won't we really have to have a very, very good estimate before June fifteenth of what the likely fallout? We probably
Well, I I I, I mean, the best estimate we can. Because June twenty second is too late to be making decisions that might um, you know, have actually a more deleterious effect if we don't make some earlier decisions.
Yep, um, but like I said, Connor and Wendy don't even have numbers from the state yet. So, you know, our normal process, you know, is the governor, the senate, the house, ways and means, back to the governor. It it's, it's a long process, I don't see how they can do that right now. They have talked about perhaps trying to work together, that certainly would be a first. Uh, if they can, that would be great. If not, that is a, that is a lengthy process, even if you have quick turnarounds in each of those bodies. So I I can't say with any confidence that I can't say with any confidence that by June fourteenth, we're going to know. Certainly, we'll try to have
No, I'm I'm not expecting that we will know. I'm obviously, though, we will be acting on estimates, right? I mean, Connor already has estimated a two point eight million dollar deficit compared to about a one million dollar deficit that we were estimating only a few months ago. So I'm talking about just within those kinds of, those kinds of pieces of information, we'll have to make some, I think, painful decisions by June fifteenth. I know we won't know what the state is doing yet. I would be stunned if the state reaches any kind of, you know, agreement before, honestly, even by the end of the fiscal year. So we're gonna have to, we're kind of on our own when it comes to doing a lot of the estimating.
Yes, I I understand what you're saying and I think you are being direct, I am the one who's not being direct. Uh, because we literally got this information this week. And so we have been working with our leadership team to talk about particular areas and I I think it's premature. Uh, even on this tight turnaround, I think it's premature to say what those might be um publicly. I I I think it's really premature.
I wasn't expecting you to actually come up with
It's gonna, yeah.
I'm just talking about a process that I think is important to make the public aware of, that it's gonna be a very difficult, complicated and potentially very painful process. No, I don't expect you to be coming up with
Right, and it's probably gonna turn on a dime. So it's going to seem like things are coming out of left field, but i- if the, as soon as we get information, we're able to announce something, we're announcing. So things may look very, very, very different than la- past years, very different.
Thank you, I just have one other quick question, Nancy. You had said something about um that we were going to continue to rely only on the Witten employees, but isn't it our own employees that we're continuing with and not the Witten, Witten employees? For the food grab and go program and that type of thing?
You said Nancy, are you asking me or Nancy?
I was asking Nancy if I could have another question. I'm asking you a question, sorry about that. I was just trying to, you know, attend to protocol. But uh, did you, did I, did I misunderstand something? Because what you actually said was
The Witten's employees are collecting unemployment.
Oh, okay, so that's what, that's what I thought.
Passed the grab and go and we, uh, yeah.
That's what I thought, but the way you said it, it sounded the opposite, so I just wanted to be sure. Okay, thank you.
Michelle?
I do not have a question, I'm just trying to really wrap my head around all the intricacies of everything you just said. It's just, it's mind-boggling, I don't, I don't have anything yet.
I I have one question. Um, the town, school, and we all, everybody has insurance, right? I mean, the town, the school department, we all have insurance, correct?
What uh, what kind of insurance? Unemployment insurance?
That's my question. Is, is there any way, like, is there something in the policy that says, um, you know, because this is happening, this COVID virus? I know the insurance isn't gonna say COVID in it, but I mean, is there something in insurance that will cover something in our budget that we missed out on because of this coronavirus? Um, Chrissy, you have a question?
You're muted. Sorry, no, I'm just, no.
Okay, I'm sorry, do you, do you understand my question? I I, Leisha, I don't know if I'm saying it correctly. You're unmute, Leisha.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I don't know if that's
We're self-insured, right?
Right.
There's no one taking over for us on this.
But if you have, so for example, the car com- uh, the auto insurance companies are giving people back money because they're not driving their cars and there's no accidents. That's all I'm asking, do we get anything back from the insurance company because school is not physically in a building? So do we get something back because of, there's not gonna be any liability in a building?
No, we still have liability. If anything were to happen at any building, we're still liable, so we would not want to suspend any insurance right now.
I I'm not asking for you to suspend the insurance, I'm just seeing if they'll fork over a few dollars for us, that's all.
No.
Okay.
No. Good idea, though. Yeah, doesn't hurt to ask.
Jackie?
Sorry, I just had to find my unmute button. Um, no, I I'm also just trying to wrap my head around the budget decisions that are gonna have to be made going forward. Um, it's, it is kind of strange how quickly they're gonna need to be made, it sounds like. Um, is very frustrating to be in this spot where we see what's coming, but we can't actually start to dive into it. Um, so I would just ask that whenever you get updates or you making progress through this process, if you just keep us informed.
Yes, of course, yep.
And Jennifer?
Uh, sure, so I have a couple of questions. One, on the June fifteenth, and again, this is just because I'm still the new, still the new girl. I'm still the new, still the new girl, um, is that, that's written into our contracts with. EEA, that's, that's a within Eastern restriction, or?
Yes, but pretty much every. Contract in the Commonwealth has a date, it's typically around June, mid-June or so. It's usually like the last day of school, or they'll have a date, or.
Yep, so with that, so given that everybody's in the same level of uncertainty with. You know, can we open, when we would open, what, how does staffing look? Would there be any? Would it make sense to, to delay that kind of collectively so that? There, there isn't this sort of artificial deadline, not artificial, but there isn't this deadline that's premature, given. The state of everybody's budgets across the board, would it benefit anybody? I'm thinking, you know, the staff as well as everybody dealing with the budget side of it, if that could be pushed out to. July fifteenth or August fifteenth, or, or, you know, some other date when. All the districts might have a better sense of what they're dealing with in terms of budgets and. So just throwing that out there to see if that's part of the conversation, or just it's totally not feasible to consider.
Well, it's, it's a good question, they're, they're all good questions, um, certainly, if you're wondering that, many people are, are likely wondering that. Uh, that would, that's not something that anybody would able to be able, that, that, anything that. Anyone would be able to do en masse, those are all the results of collective bargaining agreements. And even though it's one of the more popular things that are in agreements, it's still the result of a, of a. District's bargaining agreement with a particular unit, and so it would have to be bargained with the unit. From the perspective of the unit to, to be perfectly fair. Uh, if you were to say, I mean, there's a reason it's a very popular.
Yep.
Um, item, because that is the end of the school year, and that is. That's actually late for, for postings, postings are usually now, they're usually April, May. And for someone to be laid off in June, we, we actually try to let people, every single year, we try to let people know. Before June, we've rarely gone to June fifteenth, because. Courtesy, you, you, you know, we, we want our staff to be able to apply elsewhere. Uh, to give somebody, an educator. A July or August notification that they don't have a job in September would be, uh, I. We, I would not feel comfortable.
Yep.
Doing that, I doubt any collective. I doubt any unit would agree to something like that, um. I, I know I'm, probably shouldn't be saying that publicly, but I, I can't imagine why they would, because they're putting themselves and their families in an extremely. Vulnerable position to try to apply for a job. You know, three or four weeks before the school year starts, there's likely not anything even available at that point, um. So that's, that's why it's typically in agreements, and that is something that makes us very different. It's something that was very surprising to, to Connor Reed, you know, because it doesn't work like that everywhere. But we're on a different, we're on a different schedule than most places, right, with the school year, so. Um, it's, it's. Not something I think anyone would, would reasonably entertain for those reasons.
Yep, okay, all right.
Certainly, it would make more sense to, to have a definite, a definitive answer for people, but, um. I, I just can't see that ever being accepted.
Yep, okay, uh, my second question is, uh, we know that the scoreboard was damaged. Um, at the field, is that covered by insurance, or is that another hit to our budget?
We are actually looking at that to my, at the last time I checked, uh, the whole. Sign needed to be replaced because of the damage, it looked to me at first, it might just be the supporting beam or pole. But it has all the inner workings of the sign, and so it does need a complete replacement, I don't have that estimate yet. But the last time I looked, we have a five thousand dollar deductible, so if we are going to replace it, um. It, unless I'm incorrect, and I'll follow up on that, um, that's going to be a five thousand dollar deductible minimum.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Nancy, you're muted.
Chrissy, you are too.
Yeah, sorry, um, we have a question from, from someone in the, uh. In the audience, would you like me to share that question now?
Yes, please.
Um, so the question is from Tiffany Sears. It says, sorry if this was covered earlier, is there a prioritization group of staff that is being looked at? Or is it all unknown still? Prioritization of staff? Oh, I'm sorry, um, well, we're going through right now, all the principals right now, so. We received this information this week and immediately have the leadership team in their schools looking at all class sizes, looking at all. Uh, you know, for, for middle school and high school. Looking at what courses students selected, they were able to do course selection before. The, the closure, so they have their initial tally sheets, which means courses that students signed up for. To see what, what can be, what could potentially be consolidated, what could be not run. So we don't have that information yet, but that, that's what they're working on right now, that's reams and reams of, of information, um. So it's gonna take them at best a few days to get through, and then we are looking at class sizes. Unfortunately, we were not able to have kindergarten orientation before. Um, the, before the closure, so that is a huge unknown right now, and that is something. I'm not sure when we'll know that, it's always an unknown for us, but we have a, a, a pretty good idea. Based on, um, the, the registrations and orientations that are done in. This time of year, and we just don't have that, we're, we're actually scrambling to kind of figure out how we're even going to do kindergarten screenings. Because those are done in person, so. Again, there are a lot of unknowns still, but they're going through all of that information right now, they're gonna return it to us. They'll, the principals will make their recommendations, and then as a district, we'll, um, we'll put it all together, and, and then that's when we prioritize. After the, after the, um, building level makes their recommendations, then we prioritize as a district, we have a conversation together. About, um. About the needs and, and. It's all needed, so I, I just need to be clear about that, we have already cut to the bone the last few years, um, I know that. Many people have not, um, may not even notice that we've been laying people off regularly for the last few years, but we have. And unless it's maybe affected their students' grade or class or services, they, they may not have noticed that. But we have had some extremely painful cuts, and so we're really not in a position to shave off any. Extras or fluff, or whatever the, the term may be of, um. Ancillary things that are, are not necessary, we are at our core necessity right now, we have been. And so none of it is going to be. Good, pleasant, uh, helpful to the district, we will be regressing, there's no question about that. Um, Tiffany Sears just responded saying, thank, that info helps, thank you, Alicia. Oh, good, okay, I was just gonna ask if that was clear.
All right, thank you, any other? Comments, okay, let's move on to, uh, the public hearing part, school choice, dark ticker brawl.
So this is, uh, in, this regularly, yeah, yeah, this regularly occurs annually. This is something we've had ever since school choice was. Uh, implemented in the Commonwealth, and every year by this time, actually, I think it's by April fifteenth, but we were given a little. Extension because of the circumstances, we are to have a public hearing to consider school choice, school choice is when. We open up either a, a certain amount of spots or grade levels. For students in other districts to attend the Eastern Public Schools, and so that is, this is for your discussion of what. Whether you would like to do that for next year, again, it does happen annually, so this would be a decision just for next year, until next April, when you will have. Um, a public hearing again, and then it will be followed by a vote of whether you will allow school choice next year or not.
Okay, um, Caroline, comment?
Well, uh, the Eastern School Committee has never adopted school choice. And I certainly would not recommend that we do so now, um, obviously, our situation now is. More uncertain than probably ever in the last fifty years or a hundred years, who knows? So, um, I, I can't even imagine us contemplating such a thing for this coming year.
Michelle?
I agree with Caroline's comments, I don't think that we're really in a position to even entertain any extra. Potential expenses or services that we might need to provide or anything at this point, I think we need to really just focus on. What we have and trying to work through that right now.
And I agree, Jackie?
I agree with everything that's been said about this.
Ben?
Yeah, I, I agree as well, sorry, um, I agree as well, I think, uh, given the uncertainty that lies ahead of us and. The knowledge that we're gonna be dealing with, um, a very, very, very unprecedented budget, we don't really have, uh, room. To be offering seats, um, to out-of-district students this year.
Okay, any other comments from anyone here? Chrissy, anything on the chat?
No, there is nothing.
Thank you, okay, so I would like, uh, I need a motion to, uh, vote on the school choice for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
I'd like to move that we not adopt school choice for the school year twenty twenty-one.
Second, so Caroline made the motion and Michelle seconded, all those in favor by roll call vote.
Caroline, yes?
Michelle Durant, yes.
Nancy DeLuca, yes?
Jackie Wiseman, yes.
Jen Starr, yes.
Okay, so we are all in favor that Easton will not go to school choice. Uh, next up is public comment, so Chrissy, you have nothing else on the chat board?
I do not.
Thank you, superintendent notes.
Okay, uh, and certainly if someone wants to put in a, if it's, if it's, uh, agreeable to the chair. I have a couple of notes, if you want to check in, maybe give people a, a moment to put a question in chat, and we can go back to that, if you'd like. Okay, so just a couple of notifications, um. When we were meeting with the commissioner, he did let us know that the governor is going to be making, this is just for future. Knowledge and for Lynn to put on an upcoming agenda, we need to reconsider the schedule for next year, just one, one thing. And that is that since the marathon was not able to be held on Patriots Day, the governor is going to be having. A, another, I don't know if it's Patriots Day or some holiday in September next year. So we will not be able to have school on that day, so we're just gonna have to switch that day for a. Um, a different day in the calendar, so we can work on that at our next meeting, I just wanted to let you know that you will see that in an upcoming agenda. Or if you see that in the news or something before then, that we are, we're taking care of that, I believe it's gonna be September fourteenth. The next thing is that the middle school, if you remember when we negotiated the last bargaining, uh. The last unit contract, uh, bargaining unit A. There was a stipulation in there that the new schedule at the middle school, they would have the opportunity to revisit that and. To vote on it as a staff, they, um, this is the time when they would do that, and the D. The EEA did conduct that, and I think it was fifty-eight to eight, or, or some, certainly a very overwhelming number, the staff decided to keep that schedule. They have drafted an MOU with that, uh, information, the only changes to that, number one, are the dates. Because obviously, those are different, and the second thing is that they have made this a two-year agreement instead, um. So that after two years, they would vote, they'd vote one more time before it came, became, uh, permanent. Or, um, permanent until it, it were ever negotiated again. And so that MOU is available, I, um, have a message out to legal to see if that is one of the documents. That I would sign, or if she recommends that you sign it, obviously, if you need to sign it, we'll put it on a future agenda. I will send you the MOU for, for, obviously, for you to read it, um, you will note that those, um. Two items that I, uh, listed are the two, the only two changes in it. That is an encouraging thing, we certainly are, are happy that the staff, um, is satisfied with that. We want, naturally, we want them to be happy and feel like they have something that works well for students, and we feel that that is the case, so we're encouraged about that very much. We're very thankful for, to them for helping us come up with that schedule in the first place. I also would like to, uh, so the chair and I had, um, been having weekly meetings on. It, in my office for updates, and, um, I didn't, I wanted to offer maybe a, a weekly update. Of my own, whether the, whether we continue to keep meeting, it's been very difficult with, with, um. All the virtual meetings, I, I never thought it was possible to have more meetings than I, than we already had, but. Um, there's something very different about somebody scheduling a time slot for you. And avoiding conflicts and, you know, four different groups just making a Zoom meeting at the same time, and you're just being expected to be at all of them. So, um, we're certainly trying to clone ourselves here, but, um. But it may be some kind of weekly bulleted notice or something of updates, things are changing very quickly, so they, it may change very quickly. But as long as, you know, of course, nobody replies, um, I could, perhaps, I could provide that if, if. That's something that you'd like, and, um, to let you know that in addition to all of the events and, and details. At, um, the schools, particularly for the seniors, that we are working actively on that, Mr. Paul has met. Excuse me, with the senior advisors, they've been, uh, great in offering information, suggestions, we're, we're trying to collect all of that from them. They have also purchased signs that will be put on the front of, um. Homes of seniors to, to really honor them and, and know where the seniors are, and. Hopefully get some, some extra love, we're, we're very cognizant of the fact that this is. This is tough for everybody, those, excuse me, those of you with, with kids, it. It, it's probably difficult to imagine how you may have physically had to drag your child out of bed. To go to school months ago, and now they are very emotional about not going back to school, um, that's, I think. That, you know, that is sort of the human condition right now, right? People are starting to recognize just what was constant and supportive and, um. Important in their life, and certainly, school was that for a lot of people, so they're missing the social aspect, they're missing the supportive aspect. They're missing their teachers, their, their friends, their, their routines, and so there's an awful lot of feeling of loss. We acknowledge that that's happening, we're quite aware that that's happening, we're trying to help students and adults alike with that. To that end, we have a lot of supports on our website for parents, for students, for staff, we're hoping that people make use of them. We are trying to encourage, um, things like mindfulness and, and, and yoga, and meditation, and. And physical activity and, um, really, uh, it's one of the things I'm quite proud about, um, our learning plans, is that. They do incorporate the very best of every school day that they can, excuse me. Um, in, in this very quickly organized. Online school system that we have created, and so, um, certainly want to acknowledge that for some people, that loss is a little deeper. For example, you know, our seniors who were expecting certain traditions and milestones that are just going to be. Celebrated differently now, and our, um, our retiring staff, who certainly. After thirty, forty years of service, never expected their careers to end this way, you can imagine how, um, conflicting and difficult that is. And of course, all of our parents who are trying to assist with homeschooling of their students while they are trying to work virtually. Um, that includes a lot, most of our staff, okay, so we have staff who are. We're having Zoom meetings with people who have babies hanging off of them, and, and, you know, pets jumping on them, and. I, I was trying very hard ten minutes ago to not let you see my golden retriever shoving me over in my seat, it, it's, it's, um. It just makes for a much more challenging environment, so we, we are acknowledging that, but we are persevering. We're trying very hard to model grit and determination and perseverance and grace under pressure. And we are calling on all of our friends and our neighbors in Easton to help us do that. We wanna continue working together and um helping one another and certainly, if there are things that people think we can do that would be helpful in that regard, contact us, let us know. We're very easy to reach. I like, as I said, we're about twenty-seven, twenty hours a day, seven days a week, so um we try to respond within twenty-four hours at the most. And so between the the school level, I I think the key there, which is always the key, but particularly in this situation, the key is to try to just reflect for a second and determine who would be the most who would be the uh the source that would have the most amount of accurate information. And so, you know, a lot of times people will contact me or they'll contact Chrissy or they'll call the business office for something that really is best answered at the school level or even the classroom level. And so it it in terms of getting the an expeditious answer with the best first-person information, we're really encouraging people to reach out. Um all of our staff is uh all of our staff is um is being very responsive and uh we'll get back to people whether by phone or email. And so um we're still here. People may not be able to see us. But as I've I've been telling people, the buildings are closed, but school's not closed. We are still in session and we're still here for everyone. And um please reach out to us if there are ways that you think we can help either with your family, your children, um food, security. We're we're there for for all kinds of needs. Um so please let us know if there are things we can do that will be helpful.
Thank you. Uh Chrissy, Assistant Superintendent notes?
Uh before before my notes, uh we do have another chat. So it was Tiffany Sears again. She said um is there any pending legislation parents or town members should look at contacting legislatures about that committee thinks could assist Easton in particular?
Um that's a great question. We are uh hoping very much for a fourth federal stimulus package. That is gonna be critical for us. So certainly having one that is um perhaps less regulated or uh restricted as the prior one was, would be extremely helpful to us. So that, we're looking at that right now as basically our lifeline. And um also, uh it's especially in terms, we're we're particularly concerned about what's called the circuit breaker funding for next year. That is our special education reimbursement and we are hoping that that will be uh reimbursed at the full seventy-five percent. We have some concerns that that might not be the case. So certainly, excuse me, certainly uh advocating for the full reimbursement for circuit breaker would always be helpful and appreciated. Without it, we are um it's gonna be very difficult. Um Chrissy, Marilyn? If you can think of others. Um I will say, and I know this probably doesn't sound, and so Tiffany, I'm very thankful for this question, for you giving me this opportunity. I will say that there is one uh revenue source that is often overlooked that I have been trying to get out and share with people. If you can put lawn signs out or something, I am telling you, this has a huge huge impact on schools. And that is for people to complete the twenty twenty census.
You took my note.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Well, I'll let Chrissy talk about it then. Thunder, but we get uh all almost all the federal funding that we get is earmarked through the census. I talked previously of how our Title One funding is being decreased next year by hundreds of thousands and then with it Title Two, Title Four, all of the other funding sources also get uh decreased and things are tied to it. Like I'm saying, they're talking about stimulus money perhaps being allocated by Title One uh standards. So it clearly impacts us in many ways. When people don't fill out the census, we do not, we're not recognized appropriately. So for, I'll just give you an example. We have been paying the price from the two thousand ten census because however it was filled out, doesn't reflect the population we have in Easton. We typically have a sixteen percent low income rate. Students who qualify for free reduced lunches, activities, fees, things like that. But we have a four percent poverty rate based on the census. So when we talk about filling that out and filling it out accurately, Title One funds, uh two of the three revenue sources come from having over a five percent poverty rate. We have just slipped under that to four point something. It's it's hurting us desperately and it is coming from the census ten years ago. So I can't accentuate enough. We un- unfortunately, we had a great group of students working on a video campaign before we left. We had um information going out to parents. I had sent some emails. I can see where that might not where that certainly could not be on people's radar right now because we're in the middle of this health scare and it's just an awful crisis for many people, but it cannot be overstated. In addition to those other items, it cannot be overstated, just oh, sorry, it cannot it cannot be overstated uh just how important that census is going to be for our fiscal health going forward. So uh just to reiterate, we're looking for a fourth federal stimulus package, hopefully with less restrictive guidelines. Fully funded circuit breaker. And always we're looking for uh an increase per pupil expenditure. So we don't benefit from things like the SOA or the Student Opportunity Act because we're a minimum aid district. We're not gonna see any of that money. So especially if those millions are gonna go to to other districts this year, it's gonna hurt us even more. Less available for us. So increasing what's called minimum aid, we literally receive thirty dollars per student. We're advocating for a hundred dollars or more per student. And then finally, I would say without question, getting your friends and neighbors to complete the twenty twenty census. It sounds disjointed and unconnected, but it absolutely is. And um it's anonymous. People are sometimes afraid or perhaps embarrassed by the information that they provide. But it is absolutely not identified by a person, thank you, by person and um it's just, it's lit- it's critical to our financial health going forward. So thank you very much for that question.
Chrissy?
Okay, that's all we have in the chat right now. Um so just to reiterate what Dr. Cabral just said, the the link to fill out the census is mytwentytwocensus.gov um dot G O V. So I think that it, you know, it is, it's kind of our lifeline, so um and not just for the schools, but also for the town. So um please, please get everyone to fill out the census. It's so quick. I did it. Um I received something in the mail and was able to complete it. It was very quick to fill out. Um you don't necessarily have to have something that you receive in the mail. You can just go online and do it. So um I've been harassing my friends to do it. So and families, so I hope that um everyone here will also get um their friends and family to complete it as well. Um the only other thing that I just wanna say is this week, this past Wednesday was Administrative Professional Day. And I just wanna take this opportunity to thank all of our administrative professionals in the district. Especially at at uh just being selfish, especially at um Fifty Oliver. Um but really, all of our administrative professionals are phenomenal and they have been the our right hands, our left hands and our everything else. Um we can't be successful without them and they are remarkable and I am humbled to be working alongside them. So um thank you to our administrative professionals and happy Administrative Professional Day.
All right, uh School Committee notes, Caroline?
A couple of things. Um I would encourage anyone who hasn't already looked at the Mass Association of School Committees forwarding of that MIT report on state remote learning. Um really some interesting stuff. There's a video that has a a lot of information and um they actually reviewed uh best practices across the country. And as you know, overall, we were ranked second, but um I mean Massachusetts ranked second. But one of the interesting things that they talked about um was uh a state that was using public television to provide essentially classes for students who didn't have Wi-Fi access or, you know, um devices. And it was one way to address inequity in digital, you know, digital access. So I thought that was an interesting notion. Just thought I'd mention it.
In Massachusetts is using PBS right now.
Oh, they are. Okay.
Yes.
Good, good. Now that's what they
is using PBS. Um we, they, that actually started right from the very first has been wonderful, so I think it's important to give that shout out. They have been wonderful, not only providing their own programming, but giving uh time slots over to the state to provide their own programming as well. And um the state is actively trying to work with Univision as well for our EL
That'd be great. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's terrific to hear because
Yeah, I just, that's an import- that's good to bring up because it's important that people um tune into that because it's a fantastic resource.
Well, to be honest, they didn't mention Massachusetts as as a state that was doing it, so I'm really glad to hear that because it sounded like a quite an innovative idea. The other thing that I know that you've already addressed in several ways was they really, the MIT folks. And there was also a a guy from Harvard uh School of Education that spoke for quite a while, but they were really emphasizing the importance of starting importance of starting to plan now for really a variety of potential scenarios in the fall. And it sounds like you're already putting a great deal of work into that, which is um, you know, we would just expect that, but I did wanna mention that that's something that's recommended by this very ass- um astute group. The other thing I wanted to to talk about, just I wanted to say that this has been just such an overwhelming crisis really across the country, across the world. And it's hard to kind of find positive things to come out of it, particularly in the midst of all the grief, really just universal grief that so many people are experiencing. Not just loss of life, but loss of so many opportunities. I mean, we talked about that even for our own seniors and for other students. But the one thing that I really loved is the outpouring of appreciation for teachers that has just been everywhere. I mean, across the country, certainly very much in Easton. This kind of like I never knew how complicated and how difficult and how just incredible the job that teachers do was, you know, people just really have had their eyes opened to um, you know, the challenging work of of teaching. And it's just been nice to see um that happen. So just looking for a little bit of a a bright spot in all of this darkness. Anyway, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Michelle?
I do not have any comments.
Really? Glad, I'm glad that you smiled.
Because if we start talking about seniors and stuff, it's not gonna go well for me. Although I do have to say the amount of community support that I'm seeing all over social media and whatnot for our seniors in particular, because it's local, is just absolutely heartwarming and phenomenal. And I know that they're feeling that and it's really nice the people that don't have the seniors even, but just coming out and supporting them and anything they can do for them and that's kind of my world right now.
Well, keep smiling.
Yeah, in 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 college seniors too. We have one in my house and it's sad to think about uh not not experiencing his graduation, but
It's it's a very special community and to see them supporting however they can has just been very heartwarming.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure we'll get better, better, things will start happening. Two, uh one thing, uh okay. Last night, there was an MASC uh like a teleconference, a Zoom conference, and I know Jack was there and David Twombly was there. We all got put into different rooms. You know, we're all like the Brady Bunch in each room. And it was my group uh talked a lot about where we remote learning ready, devices and oh, the lunch program. And it was quite interesting because there were people from all over the state that there were, it's all school committee people. So Taunton was there. Nantucket, Southeast Regional, North Adams, Orange, Woburn, Framingham, Middleboro. And it was really interesting to hear the other stories. And I believe that we have, there's a meeting tomorrow too that we can get involved in if we want, you know, it's just a Zoom thing. But you just kind of listen to what's going on in the rest of the state. And I'm sure you know Dr. Cabral because you've been involved with the other superintendents. I felt like when it was my turn to talk, I could honestly say that Easton was remote-ready learning, at least that, you know, that week after the first week, that everybody has devices that they need and um we have the grab-and-go lunches and, you know, things like that. So I felt good about responding for Easton that you know, we were doing okay. Some towns, it's a little bit scary, but you know what? Everybody's different and they'll all handle it. Um and my other one with Michelle is I just keep picturing the uh graduation at the Air Force Academy. And if they can do it, we should be able to do it somehow, whether it be at the park or at Moskato Stadium and sit them all like eight feet apart from each other and video it and they should have a graduation in June. But that's just me and I know you guys are working on it. That's just my two cents. My other question, and I might say, is are we going to continue having our regular meetings now? Because that was another thing that some of the school committee members last night, they were saying they're meeting all the time. And I know you don't want another meeting, Dr. Cabral. But I think we need to know where we are, how can we help, what can we do as a committee to help you help the school department? So uh uh next meeting is scheduled for next Thursday. Do we wanna keep that or do we wanna change it? Anybody can
I'd like to keep it.
All right, and then I'll be in touch with Lynn and
Well, I'm just one person. Did anybody else?
Keep regular meetings.
I agree. I think there's gonna be so much um coming out so fast that if we don't have a regular meetings, we're gonna miss them.
You know, it doesn't have to be a three-hour, you know, just a quick meeting. Let's get to the facts. Let's do it. But I think we just need to, we we can't meet unless it's posted and all that, so. Um okay, so April thirtieth will be our next meeting. Okay, thank you. Jackie?
I have a couple of things. First, um I did like the idea Dr. Cabral raised about a weekly update. I thought that would be very helpful actually because things are moving so quickly. Um and we can't necessarily have weekly meetings, so um if if you don't mind, I think that would be a great help. Um and just to follow up what Nancy was saying about the MASC networking event last night, it was very, very useful to hear how other districts are handling all the issues that we're dealing with. And one of the things we did talk about was having those types of um Zoom meetings with um school committee members uh more regularly going forward through this crisis. And I think that'll be helpful as well. I'm looking forward to seeing um more that are scheduled. Um and the last thing I need to say is um there's this Facebook page called A View From My Window. And while I don't always promote Facebook pages, this is um members from all over the world and the premise behind it is we are all in the same situation. We're all in our homes, we're all quarantined. And so what it is, is you take a picture from your window, whether, you know, you're a nurse and you're at work or you're at home in your living room. And you just say where you are, when you took this picture. And people are writing little posts like, you know, it's my birthday today or this is what my backyard looks like. And it seems kind of simple. But what it does is it really shows you that the whole world is dealing with this. And people from all over are in the same situation. And that's been kind of unifying. That's been really helpful, I think, to see, not just for me, but for my son. The other thing that's great about it is you see all over the world. I mean, I'm talking about New Zealand, um Brazil. Um, Brazil, Africa, everywhere. These pictures are from everywhere. You see pictures, somebody's backyard had bears and another one had kangaroos in it. Another one had a monkey sitting on its ledge. It's just. It's so.
That sounds very cool.
Eye-opening. It, it's just, it's really, I would highly recommend it because it's just, it shows you the world. And it kind of is a bright spot in all of this because you can, everyone's coming together to show how we are all dealing with the same thing. And this is what it looks like from where I am. And I just, I just, I love it. I look forward to seeing those pictures every day and sharing them with my son. That's it.
That's great. Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you. Alright, Jen?
Uh, I think Michelle wanted to add something before.
Can I add something super quick? I'm sorry. I know I'm talking out of turn, but I'm just in my head, I'm going through, we talked, we talked about how. The custodians have really stepped up during all this and Lunch Aids and the clerks and the administrative assistants got a special shout out today. And teachers, of course, but also remember that the parents are working behind the scenes and working with those teachers. And really helping to make all of the lessons and the student services happen. And I just wanna make sure that they don't get forgotten and everybody else.
Oh gosh, yes. In fact, once I started listing people, that's why I stopped and I said, actually. I actually stopped and said every educator because in my mind, I'm thinking guidance counselors, school adjustment, parents, nurses. And it, it really is everyone. And I thought, I can't leave out one group. So I stopped listing people. But it certainly wasn't because anyone was forgotten. We are absolutely, absolutely blessed to have multiple, multiple um, areas. All educators, because they're all educators and they're all working with our kids right now. Thank you. That's an important point.
Okay. Um, so I, I'm glad Nancy and Jackie, that you guys were able to go to the, the MASC webinar. Um, I, I was shut out because they limited it to a hundred participants. It seems like something that had. You know, obviously a lot of interest and, and value. So hopefully we'll be able to um, hopefully they'll have more of them and maybe open them up more. Um, I am.
Jen, there is, there is one tomorrow that um, Nancy had mentioned, but it is can't, it's um, closed already.
I'm attending that one. So that, well, the one I'm attending tomorrow is at eleven-thirty and it's on the Federal Education Advocacy Discussion. Um, so there is, I'm just looking at the note now. So it's the National School Board Association Chief Advocacy Officer. Um, and it'll cover federal education priorities, the twenty-twenty election and public education and funding. For public education during COVID nineteen. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that and it, it looks to certainly be informative. Um, and hopefully they'll be able to share um, some of the content from that. So that we can disseminate it and, and get further up to speed on what's being advocated for at the federal level. Which we, as we know, is probably the biggest stopgap opportunity we have for any relief um, in the budget. Cause it's not coming locally or from the state. Um, the other thing is I wanted to um, to again, can, you know, really. I, I, I'm so, I don't know why I get emotional. Our CPAC is so awesome. So. Um, gonna try to get through this. As we know, our, our special ed population is, is one of great concern. Um, to the district. And our CPAC Board has been so amazing with. With meeting with the Special Services Department. With facilitating events. Um, for, there was an amazing event this week. Um, a town hall where there were thirty-nine participants um, on, on Zoom at the highest point. It was a combination of, um, it was the CPAC Board, Teresa Skinner, Dr. Davenport. And then a mix of parents and educators. Um, it was really great to see so many educators tuning in. Um, so we, they, they just covered so, so much, I, I see Tiffany. Um, so they covered so much amazing, helpful content. And um, as, as a parent, and then as, you know, a member of this committee and a member of the school community at large. It was just so reassuring to see the expertise that we have in the district. Who is working on that safety net of students, not just students, but families. Um, so Dr. Davenport called this um, a collective social emotional trauma. And having it named, um, sorry, was just so, um, I think it just named it, you know, to need. And to know that their resources not only being geared towards students, but educators with how they're gonna deal with the. Students coming back from this, um, whenever that happens, whenever we're all together again and supports up there for. And uh, and, and this tremendous supports out there for families. There's also, um, they've been coordinating with Inclusion Matters in West Bridgewater. Uh, a, a neighboring CPAC on Wednesday coffee hours. And then Friday afternoon, um, the CPAC has been hosting. Just a, a social support group. So I've been able to drop into some of those and um, it's just been. You know, really, really highlights um, how in a time of crisis, um, having these amazing parent resources come together. And facilitate and, and work with, um, you know, the, the parents of students who are dealing with some of the greatest needs. Um, I, I just, they blow me away, so. That's it. Sorry.
Sounds great.
Uh, yeah, sorry, sorry. Thank you, Jen. That was awesome. One more thing.
We have one more chat.
Go ahead with the chat.
Um, again, Tiffany Sears wrote, um, lunchroom staff and whoever else cleans up afterward, I appreciate them all the more now.
Thank you, Tiffany. Um, I have one more thing that I told Jason Daniels from um, ECAT. He went to, or he was at one of the planning meetings for the new school and he was interested in uh, direction for. Uh, communication in the new schools, you know, as far as setting things up. So I did tell him I would bring it up and think about it. We could talk about it at our next meeting. Um, I'll get some more information from him too, but you know, I don't know where we stand right now with the auditorium and the um. Simmons Lecture Hall. I feel so bad. I feel so bad for everybody everywhere. I just like, oh my god. But he did say that, you know, there's so many opportunities for the new school. And as Caroline reminded me. I, cause I was getting all upset about the new school and would we even be in a new school. But she gave me confidence that it would be, the best thing will probably be a premier location of updated things even with COVID. So, thank you, Caroline. Does anyone else have any comments?
Could I just say that I, I'm so glad that Jen said what she did because I have been such a fan of CPAC. I haven't been able to be nearly as involved as Jen, but um, I have been such a fan for years now. And I, I really think that probably maybe no other district, but if any, very few districts have such a. Just active, but also smart and thoughtful group of people in their special education pack. And I just, um, I agree with you, Jen. They're just incredible. So thank you for.
Expertise and experience they bring to the district is just invaluable, so.
I agree.
Alright, do, um, do we have an, a motion to adjourn?
Some moved. Caroline O'Neil.
Jackie seconds.
Okay, so roll call.
Caroline O'Neil, yes.
Michelle Durant, yes.
Nancy DeLuca, yes.
Jackie Wiseman, yes.
Jen Starr, yes.
And we'll see you on April thirtieth. And thank you, everybody in EPS. You're awesome.
Thank you for all your support, School Committee. Very much, thank you.